And I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we have Kate Garhan, Elizabeth Tattersall, Joe Harper, and Bonnie Rogers. So we have a quorum present, and Heather May join us in a few minutes.
Bonnie, my COVID, my second shot was rescheduled for today. So I'm going to have to leave at 10:40.
Okay, I don't want you to miss that. So I have all of my shots.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, public comment. All written public comments that are received prior to 4:00 p.m. the day before the library board meeting will be compiled and will be added as supplemental material for the library trustees and the public to review prior to the meeting. To make public comment during the meeting, the public must call 775-783-6024 and leave a voice message which will be played for the library board of trustees and the public. Any written public comment received after 4:00 p.m. the day before the library board meeting will be compiled and added as supplementary materials to the county's website and distributed to the library board of trustees within 24 hours after the meeting. Okay, it's 10:01, so Veronica, do we have any public comment?
As of now, we have not received any public comment.
Okay, we'll wait five minutes to see if we receive any.
I was here, but I guess I didn't hit the right button, so.
Okay, we'll proceed then at 10:06 with the meeting. For possible action, discussion on approval of proposed agenda, the library board of trustees reserves the right to take actions out of order to combine two or more agenda items for consideration and to remove items from the agenda at any time. All items designated for public action shall include discussion by the board of trustees, and they may take action to approve, modify, deny, take no action, or continue the item. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Item number three for presentation only, proclamation 2021 PL-01, a proclamation recognizing 28 years of dedicated service to Douglas County by senior library technician Maria Pearson. And I did talk with Maria, and she could not be with us today. So Kate, do you want to proceed with this?
I think we need to make a vote on the motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. I was listening to the telephone. Okay, let's make a motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah, I made the motion, and Jill seconded.
Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so too. Okay, any opposed? Okay, now we'll go to property, to item number three. I'll read it again. Proclamation 2021 PL-01, a proclamation recognizing 28 years of dedicated service to Douglas County by senior library technician Maria Pearson. Kate?
Okay, and I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Maria Pearson has been employed by Douglas County Public Library since 1992 and retired on January 31, 2021. Whereas Maria Pearson provided services to the patrons of the library, engaging in over 5,000 storytime hours. For 28 years, Maria educated and enriched the lives of children, tweens, and teens, introducing many to the lifelong love of reading. This became a generational occurrence where former storytime participants would stop by with their own children and thank Maria for her contributions. Whereas Maria Pearson, along with other staff, planned and organized the summer reading programs each year. She used her enthusiasm and positive outlook to deliver excellent service to our patrons and engaged readers of all ages. Whereas Maria Pearson coordinated used book sales for the library, accepting book donations, sorting and displaying books, supervising volunteers, and overseeing the sale. When the friends of the library took over the book sale, Maria continued to volunteer her time and expertise to assist and ensure the sales continued to be a great success. Whereas Maria's expertise and institutional knowledge have been of immeasurable value to the county, to the library, and countless residents and visitors. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the Douglas County Public Library Board of Trustees and library director Amy Dodson that the Douglas County Public Library recognizes Maria Pearson for 28 years of service to readers of all ages. The library board of trustees and staff express heartfelt thanks to Maria Pearson for her outstanding service to the people of Douglas County, adopted this 23rd day of February 2021 by the board of trustees.
Okay, do we have a, you making that motion then, Kate, that we approve it?
I'll make the motion that we approve the proclamation.
Well, it's not an action item. Cynthia, I don't think we need to vote on it since it's a presentation, right?
No, it's not listed for action, so it's just presentation only.
Okay. But do we need to accept it then, Cynthia?
I think since it wasn't listed for possible action, that if the board members have comments, they can make them at this time, and that you can present the actual proclamation to the employee at a later time if you'd like.
Okay. Do we have comments in on the proclamation?
I've known Maria for over 30 years. I had her son in first grade, and she was a parent helper back then, it's before she worked at the library. And then she worked a lot at those book sales. Boy, she was amazing. She had those China Springs guys going. She drove the truck. She was just, what a gift, what a gift she was to all of us.
I've known Maria since I've lived here and worked with her in the library and, you know, as on the book sales and things, and the storytimes and things that she did, what she did with children were outstanding, and so.
And I worked with her during the crafting hours, and she was extremely helpful, and the children absolutely loved being around her. And it was quite fun to walk by the castle and see Maria doing storytime in there.
Other comments? Well, thank you then very much, and we'll make an effort to present that to Maria when she's available, so.
Yeah, good job, Kate, on preparing that.
Oh, thank you.
I spoke to Maria on Saturday, and she said she appreciated the thought, and, but she did not want the physical proclamation, but she did thank the board for recognizing her.
Okay, further comments? Okay, then we'll proceed to item number four for possible action, discussion on approval of the minutes of January 26, 2021, and February 4, 2021 meeting. So on January 26, 2021, do we have a motion to approve?
Actually, I have a comment on that. I feel in the minutes under item 10, which related to discussion and possible action regarding in-person library services, on page, that's page seven of the minutes where it begins, and then it continues over to page eight, and finally ends on page nine. I don't disagree with anything that's written here, but I feel like there are some things that are missing, that were discussed in the meeting. And so I'll speak for myself, there were things that I know I said in the meeting that aren't reported here. And I think if we can remember back to that meeting, I kind of kicked off this discussion by talking, I think it was for about maybe 10, 15, who knows, 20 minutes. Kind of giving an overview of my recommendation that we, you know, that, you know, I was advocating for reopening of in browsing hours, which we now have, and that's all been resolved. But for the interests of history and the historical record, in that period of time, I spoke about a specific document, which I read aloud to the board, which was the January 21 COVID-19 mitigation and management task force press release, in which the task force had released a notification from the state biostatistician regarding the fact that we had seen the worst of the holiday infections, and we were now moving to the downside of that. And I think that is an important thing to put on record in the historical record, because I do want it to be clear that as trustees, we do care about the safety of our employees, and that the fact that this information became available, you know, did have a bearing on the advisability of open for in-person browsing. I also made a mention that our budget, we should consider purchasing KN195 masks, and that our budget could surely accommodate that, and I made a reference to the price on that per item that I had researched. None of that, neither of those two items are there. And I bring them up specifically because in the, in the part of the minutes that report on Director Dodson's reflections on the advisability of reopening, you know, she did note that staff will be extra cautious and probably a little scared. A little further on, we, she talks about positivity rates and that being, you know, considered as a benchmark, the issue of sanitizing material or touching books, and then said this is an issue of science. And I don't dispute that at all, but at the same time, the, what the biostatistician has to say about the state of affairs regarding COVID and infections and trends is also a matter of science. So I think we need to be even-handed in showing that, yes, we are definitely interested in science, and, you know, that was, that was, I wouldn't have read that press release if I didn't think it had some significance on, on the bearing of where we're at. Also, at the end of 10, I, when we made the decision to invite Dr. Holman to present, which he was not able to do, but he did provide a letter, as we know, one of the things that I asked for when we got to the end of our discussion about benchmarks and possible benchmarks, and whether Dr. Holman might be able to provide some guidance and insight on that, was when we made the decision to have a special meeting to continue discussion on this, as I made the request, and I remember seeing on Zoom, a lot of people nod their heads when I made this request. I made the request that when we came to our next meeting, that Director Dodson bring a decision tree that had, would have two legs, one showing us a path that would bring us to an opening, and another showing us the path that would argue against that and, you know, argue for continued curbside and telephone service only. And we, we never did get that decision tree, which, you know, we, that's, I guess that's okay, in that we came to a, we came to a decision, but I would like it in the record that that request was made, and no one stepped forward to say that is unnecessary, nor did Director Dodson say, I don't feel that's needed. It was simply a request, and a request that did not get fulfilled. So I think it's important to document that. So I would like that added, I would like some changes added to, you know, introduce these, you know, introduce these, these discussion points into the record.
I'd just like to note real quickly that all the meetings are recorded, and so everything that's said is on record. Minutes are intended to be a summary of what was discussed and what was voted on, but not a verbatim transcript at all. So in terms of preserving the history of the meetings, we've been doing that for eons. All of the meetings have been recorded for many, many years. So anything that was said or introduced at the meeting is recorded already.
I understand that, Amy, but as, and I understand it's, we're not reporting a verbatim transcript, but when there's something that's important and material, I'm not talking about adding paragraphs, you know, there was a great deal of reporting about your concerns about, you know, the, the, you know, the, you know, the way the virus can live on shelves and, and so on. And there was no reporting of something that we talked about that I think is very, you know, relevant and germane, that would take one sentence, which is, one of the reasons this was brought up was because we had letters from patrons who were very strongly advocating to have the library open. And in my kind of preamble, when I introduced this topic, I gave some specific numbers relating to social media comments on a public community site. And again, you know, not, I'm not saying everything I say has to be reported and recorded in history, but when it is something that is relevant to a decision and its data, then I think that it should come into the report. And that's my feeling.
Heather, may I ask, would you meet with Julie and, and go through, listen through the tape, and then make what recommended changes you'd like to see in the minutes, and we could approve them at the next meeting?
That would be fine with me.
Who's Julie? Oh, not Julie, Veronica. I don't know who is, I was reading Julie's name at the time, Veronica. So would you meet them with Veronica and go through that?
Go through that part of the meeting, you know, that, yes, that, that item that we, of discussion in the meeting. Yes, I would be happy to do that, and I can get together following this with Veronica, and we'll come up with a time prior to the next board meeting.
I also have on page seven, under item E, policy on gifts. The, starts at the fourth line down, "When the library receives donation, a patron is given a receipt at their request, which does not give any value." I would like to see that reworded, "When the library receives donation, the person is given a receipt if requested," which does not give any value.
Is there something incorrect in the, in the sentence?
Well, yeah, the pronoun, it says receipt at their request.
Okay.
So if you just say if requested, it's the same, but they, it's not, the pronoun is incorrect. Someday, we're going to stop doing that.
Stop doing what?
Using plural pronouns for singular subjects. And they is accepted.
I got it now.
But these are legal documents. Okay. Okay, so we'll hold off on approval of the January 26 meeting until the next meeting.
Do we have to make a motion, Cynthia?
Cynthia Gregory from the Douglas County DA's office. You can make a motion, you don't have to. I think the record is clear that there's, they're going to be brought back at the next meeting for clarification regarding some statements that were made.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. The February 4, 2021 minutes.
I move to approve.
I second it.
Does anyone have any corrections to them? I read them over carefully, I didn't see any, but. See all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number five, the consent calendar, items appearing on the consent counter are items that can be adopted with one motion unless pulled by trustee wishing to have an item or items further discussed. When items are pulled for discussion, they will be automatically placed as the next item for discussion, or may be continued until another meeting. For possible action, approval of gift fund games, January 2021, February 2021. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to confirm, to confirm the consent calendar.
Second?
Approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second? I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number six, for possible action, discussion and review of the budget performance report, summary and gift fund summary of January 31, 2021.
Um, as you can see on the summary page, we're about at the halfway mark in salaries and benefits, which is right on target because we're halfway through the fiscal year. In services and supplies, the only thing to note is that there was a, a large deduction for admin and overhead, and that is another word for cost allocations, and we don't have control over those, or when they go through. So at the beginning of the fiscal year, they list the projected cost of all the cost allocations, which this year was 174,481. And at this time, 87,000 of that has already been charged to our account, but that's a lot more than the previous month, and so that would explain that the jump in percentage. But again, it's out of our control, it just happens when it happens. But other than that, there's nothing really notable unless anyone has questions.
And some of these that are, you know, way over their amounts on the percentage of the budget used, that will be taken care of when?
Oh, well, at the end of the fiscal year, the only things that have to balance are the the only things that have to balance are the larger categories, so salaries, benefits and services and supplies. So if one line is over and another line is under, they wash each other out basically. And, and by law, we're not required to balance every line item. It only has to be within the category. So a larger amount on one line item will balance with a smaller amount in another line item, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Well, it does, Amy, but I looked through the deficits that were overspent in certain categories. And what concerns me, if you, if we continue to do that through the next six months, will we have enough money to balance it out? Because we don't have a lot of extra money in any of these accounts.
Yeah, I know. Depending on how things go, I will be discussing our revenue with the CFO to see if any unexpected revenue has come in that we can apply that will help balance this out. But until then, I'm not concerned about the items that are over, simply because some of it is reimbursable by the CARES Act, which we haven't received yet. And our spending isn't necessarily the same every month, so it's easy to monitor, for me anyway. And that, and what I mean by that is if there is one area that's overspent that doesn't look like it's going to balance, I can, I can change the purchases on another line and it'll all balance out.
So what you're saying to us is you're keeping a monthly check on that, that at the end of the year, we're going to have enough money to balance out?
Yes.
Even if we don't get new revenues?
Let's hope so.
Well, I know. But hoping is not planning. And so we need to know.
I know.
Okay.
I just meant, I hope that we have revenues. Sorry.
I know, but.
But yes, it will balance out at the end of the year.
So. Okay. Do we need to take action on this?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this? I'll make a motion to approve the budget performance report summary. Is there a second? Okay, Jill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now this next item for possible action, discussion and possible action to reboot, review the library bylaws, the current adopted bylaws, 2008, suggested revisions, 2019, library directors' recommendations. Those were also in 2019, weren't they, Amy?
Yeah, I believe they started that way, yes. But I think I revised them again last year.
Well.
Anyway.
I'm going to take a minute to the board to give you a history of this, okay? We started actually in the fall of 2018 and appointed a subcommittee which consisted of Lisa Foley and myself. And through the spring of 2019, Lisa and I met with Cynthia Gregory and Doug Ritchie. And we also talked with representatives from the state library and we had several different library bylaws that we used to review to see how the the bylaws should be written. And so we presented in early, I think, 2000, we tried to present again the fall of 2000, starting in 2000, the bylaws, and somehow or other, we never got around to doing that, having them on the agenda for approval, because I think a lot, we revised the director's evaluation form and several other things taking place. So what you have with the red are the recommended bylaws that Lisa Foley and I, as a subcommittee, recommended to the library in 2019. And so here we are in 2021, talking about. And I, as, as we go through them, I have some changes, partly because I read the county's commissions and committees document, which we all had to read and say that we had done. And so I wanted to go through some of those and I can, I can answer questions for you and Amy can't. And then Amy submitted in 2019, and it's in yellow, her recommended bylaws revisions. And so on, on the first page, page one, and I, under appointments and vacancies, this is just a technical change, but in accordance with library laws. And then it says trustees, period. But I think it should read trustee applications are available from the county manager's office. And that's just a technical correction.
Um, what page is that on?
It's on page one.
Which number?
Under item three, one, item three, number one, where it says are appointed by the county, the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with Nevada law. And then it has trustees, period. And, and I just, it should maybe read trustee applications are available from the county manager's office. Do you see what I mean?
Actually, I think the parentheses, quote trustees, should come after the word members for clarity, because that's just saying that that's a shorthand.
What are you reading, Elizabeth?
So same item. But I think the word trustees is just misplaced. That's the trustees in quotes is telling us that's a shorthand that's going to be used later in the document. And if we just move that up after the word members, that clarifies that. It is a little confusing having that come at the end of that sentence.
I know. It was, that's what shall consist of five. The library board shall consist of five trustee members?
The five members parentheses, quote trustees.
Now I see it. Okay, that would be okay with me.
I think that's a good change.
Yeah. Um, item number four on number three. And it says trustees may not be appointed to hold office for more than two consecutive four-year terms. Well, it's really interesting in the commissions and the committees document of the county, it says if they're four-year terms, they can be for three terms. Now, I don't recommend doing that to the bylaws. And wouldn't be okay with that, wouldn't we, Cynthia? Our bylaws could limit it to two consecutive term.
Yes, that, that's for the, the 12 years is pursuant to a statute of limitations. That doesn't necessarily apply in this case. So if you wanted to make it shorter, that it's only eight years, you could. You know, I, I think you want to balance that because there is some value to having some longevity, but that's absolutely up to the members.
Well, I personally think eight years is it's a long time really to serve on a board, but it also gives opportunity. If we limited to eight years, that other people in the community have a chance to participate.
I agree.
Do we need to add another sentence that there's a maximum of eight years or just leave it at two consecutive terms?
I think we just leave it at two consecutive terms.
Is that right, Cynthia?
So I think you might want to clarify because if somebody, let's say a member resigns and a member is appointed to fill like the one-year remaining term, would you want them to only have five years or two full four-year terms?
Well, since I've done in the past, and I'll use a most wrong knowing because he is no longer with, but Bob Chambers was appointed to fulfill a term of a, a member who left. And then he did serve two full consecutive terms.
And I believe that's in the county policy that if you're fulfilling another term, it doesn't
I think that would be okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we should keep that wording. I think that would be okay. And that still keeps their term limit within the, the three times that's by regulation.
Yeah, so.
Still keeps it under.
Okay, so we can, now on this page, I guess it's three. My page is not, but it's under absences, it's under parliamentary authority. And then it's business, item number one, business shall be conducted in accordance with the Nevada law, et cetera. And Sturgis is standard code of political, of parliamentary procedure. I did look up Sturgis and it's the second most common parliamentary procedure, the first being Robert's Rule of Order. Now, interesting, I've had I think three comments from people saying, what is Sturgis? And I said, I've never seen it. But I did, I saw copies on Google. But I recommend we replace that with Robert's Rule of Order. That's, everybody's familiar with that. That acceptable?
That's a good suggestion.
That makes
Okay, I'm sorry. I have to leave.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jill. Good luck with your shot.
All right. Thanks. Bye.
I did have mine and I had no reaction, but.
Oh, good. I'm hoping. I'm hoping. Bye.
Bye.
Bye, Jill.
Okay. So we'll substitute then Robert's Rules of Orders for Sturgis standard code of parliamentary procedure. In item number four under that, and it says, when necessary, is permissible for a trustee's, it should be, it is permissible for trustees to purpose, to participate remotely. Take the A out. Okay. Under officers, under item number three, item officers, which is six, item number three under six, no member should be eligible to serve more than one term in the same office. And the vacancy in the office shall be filled by the trustees. And again, in the county commissions and things, it says they could serve no more than two consecutive terms as an officer. The reason this was put in there was, again, history. And when I first came on the board, people had been in the same office for a few years. And the board at that time, and it wasn't put in the bylaws, but the board at that time made the decision that in order for people appointed to the trustees or to the board, that all members of the board would have an opportunity to serve in an office. And so they changed it at that time with, I guess, I don't know, it must have been a motion or something. I don't, I wasn't on the board and that it, they would only serve for one term. Now, they could then be elected again and maybe their second four years or something to serve is another term, but I, I would be amenable to say they couldn't serve no more than two consecutive years in the same office. It, I think if you're on the board, to have the opportunity to serve as the chair, co-chair, or other officers we might have is very important in the role as a board member. So I just leave that up because I didn't notice that. And I thought, well, I better comment on it at least.
I, I agree. I think the two terms is a, a good change to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. I think so too, in that I agree with you that there should be a chance to circulate and allow people to step into that role. At the same time, if we allow two terms, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into being the chair, a lot of extra work. And if someone enjoys that and is good at it, I don't see the harm in letting them, you know, continue if the rest of the trustees are in agreement. But I think it's reasonable to put a limit on it and two sounds pretty fair, so.
Yeah. Okay, so if we change that, no board member should be eligible to serve more than two consecutive terms in the same office.
I have a question. Do we need to say annual meeting in that last sentence? Or should we change that to the first meeting of the year? Because it's always done at the January meeting.
Where is that, Amy?
The last sentence of that same item, number three, where it says, an officer shall serve a term of one year from the date of the annual meeting at which they are elected and until a successor is elected.
What if you said from the January meeting of which they are, well, here we have, at which.
There's some noise in the background, so I couldn't hear everything you said.
Melanie.
An officer shall, from the year, why don't you say you have it?
Well, from the date, well, we always elect officers at the first meeting of the year, and I don't know if we need to note that or just leave it as annual meeting. I think it's kind of confusing to say annual meeting.
I do too.
So Cynthia, from the Douglas County DA's office. So I think you have to take into consideration that you might elect a chair, right? They're, they're elected initially in January, but then what happens if somebody vacates the, the position? So then are you going to change the, the appointment period? So I think we all understand, Amy, what you're saying and, and are all in agreement. I think there's just some wordsmithing that needs to occur to indicate that yes, they, they are appointed in January and that's going to be given as a, the term unless.
Well, how about you take out annual and just leave it the meeting at which they're elected?
Yeah, you, you could do that. I think the concern is, is if you have a chair that is suddenly elected in March or something like that due to somebody moving or something like that.
Right, then that would imply that the next chair is elected in March and it would start rolling potentially.
Okay. We are, we elect them and could you say, an officer shows well, it says above that vacancy in the office shall be filled by a vote of the trustees and next regularly scheduled be in the library after the vacancy occurs.
I, I think we, I think Kate was right. We could just leave out the word annual and just say an officer shall serve a term of one year from the date of the meeting at which they are elected.
Well,
I don't like that.
Okay.
If you're fulfilling a term, you can't serve one year from the date they're elected.
You just Well, could you put, could you put, from the meeting at which they are elected, comma, unless they are fulfilling a term of another member?
How about one year from the date of the first meeting of the year at which they are elected or, and until a successor? Or maybe that should be in instead of at.
Sorry. So it would say of one year from the date of the first meeting of the year at which they are elected and until a successor is elected. Is that what you said, Elizabeth?
That is what I said.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it should be, or.
Well, just add another sentence saying if someone is Well, just add another sentence saying if someone is elected or appointed to fulfill another vacancy, that it only goes till the end of that term.
That might be simpler.
Yes. No.
And clearer if we make the other sentence.
Say that again for me, Kate.
I can't remember. Um, uh, just another line that says if someone is elected to a position to fulfill a vacancy, they only serve the remainder of that term.
Yeah.
They only.
The, not they, the person. The persons, uh, elected shall only serve until the end of the term.
I'll put he, she instead of they.
Yeah, put he and she, cause in both of them, Amy.
You got it.
Okay, um. That's, that's just some of the technical things I wanted to cover. But as I've said, uh, we then, after we wrote all of this and checked it all out, um, both Cynthia, we've started with Cynthia and Cynthia guided us through a lot of it and made recommendations for what we should include that hadn't been in previous bylaws. And then, um, Doug Ritchie came over and Doug did, uh, put all this together for showing the changes. I, I would be, on the last page, it says a ten-year long-range plan, but since State Library recommends five, maybe we want to change that to five. But I don't know, you can think about that. But anyway, this, uh, this is, the bylaws that we recommended, they're more contemplative than the previous bylaws. But the bylaws set the regulation and how the lot, board will operate. And what I've found over the years being a board member is I can go through the bylaws and find out what our responsibilities are and our fiduciary responsibilities, which goes to the financial part of it. So that, uh, we, that the board doesn't have to look up county policy and state laws and all types of things in order to conduct their business. And, uh, I'm also found over the years, how often we go back to the bylaws and review and look at them and see what they say. So, um, this is the committee's recommendation. Now, Amy, you want to speak to your recommendation?
No, I don't need you.
Okay, so, um. There's one change.
I think.
One change made in. Oh, we changed the number of meetings to have a meeting in July. And again, having been on the board, um, for a few years, I'm, over, it's become very apparent in the last three to four years that we need to have, uh, a meeting in July. It's easier to cancel a meeting than it is to call a special meeting. And, and Amy is the director is, you know, available in Ju, may, you know, she can't take vacation, but it's available. So that, um, we have at least eleven meetings to handle the business of the library. And, and I think probably this summer was a good indication of why we needed to have a meeting. And so I, those are the, I recommend the board of trustees bylaws that, uh, submitted by the subcommittee for your approval. I'll make a motion to do that. Is there a second?
Elizabeth had a question, I think.
Okay, Elizabeth.
I think there are some good things, or at least one that I particularly would like to add for clarity from Amy's suggestions.
Okay.
Before we vote on new bylaws.
Okay.
Um, and in particular, the one I was just looking at is under officers. I, so, uh, part six, officers, item one. I think the addition after the word chairperson of, from among the appointed trustees is good clarity.
Which number is that again?
Six officers, item one, after the word chairperson from among the appointed trustees.
Okay. Okay, so it would be annually in January, the library board shall select a chairperson from the appointed.
From among the appointed trustees to preside over all meetings.
Okay. Okay, any other, uh, comments?
Cynthia Gregory from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office, Madam Chair, if I may. So I think that change would come under calendar, which is, uh, section eleven, item one. That that's where that new language would be added.
Oh.
Just for clarification.
So you think we should move the election of the chairperson to item eleven? Is that what you're saying?
No, so, sorry about that. So for clarification, if you look at the subcommittee's proposal under their section eleven, it says calendar. And that item one says every January, new trustee shall be selected by the Board of County Commissioners. And so I didn't know if you wanted to put in there also the new language about electing, um, the elections that, that, the language that you suggested going under there. Because from my recollection, I didn't see where it said they were going to be elected, what month.
So if you look at six officers, it says in January.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I don't think we should duplicate it.
Okay. So do you want it under there or do you want it under the calendar? I'm, I'm fine either way.
I would leave it under officers so that that.
Okay.
You know, the other things are really, the calendar is what the commissioners and then our required reporting.
Got it. So Cynthia Gregory, just two other items with regards to, um, item six officers, which we were talking about. And item five, the ad hoc committee. I think my recommendation would be to add just in front of that, consistent with the OML. Because if you appoint a board to make recommendations to this board, then that, they have to, let's say you say it's staff or members of the public, then they have to comply with OML, the open meeting. So if we just add in front of that, consistent with Nevada Open Meeting Law, then I think you're fine.
Okay.
Um, the other suggestion or question that I had was with regards to item ten. At the very end of that, right before, or excuse me, item, I gotta get my numerals correct. I think it's item, um, roman numeral eight at the very bottom. It makes a reference to NRS chapter three fifty-five.
Where?
So it's, if you look at item nine, compliance with Douglas County Finance Department Policies and Procedures.
Okay.
Directly above that, you'll see there's two references to NRS chapter three fifty-five. And that's a state, um, public investment, and that regulates the state public investment. So I don't believe that that's necessarily applicable to this board. But I wasn't sure why it was included, so I just wanted to raise that issue. And see if, if that was.
I think it was included if the library had any money it wanted to invest in something. I mean, we could take it out. I, I think just because it was in NRS is the reason it was left in there, but we could take it out.
Right, so what I suspect, Madam Chair, is that this language may have been taken from a state policy.
Yeah.
Three fifty-five is applicable to the state. Whereas three fifty-four is applicable to the counties.
Okay.
Could you just fix that and put three fifty-four?
I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't, um, that there wasn't a specific reason that it was three fifty-five versus three fifty-four.
I, I don't know. If not, to my knowledge, it wasn't. It was just it was in, so should we change it to three fifty-four?
Yes, that, that's my recommendation.
Okay. That's fine. Okay.
Was that all you had, Cynthia?
Yeah, nothing further.
Okay, then I had one on, and I don't even know what number it is. I guess it's under number eight. It's the letter N, each trustee must complete the training. Can you see where I'm at?
Nope. Yes.
Okay, that I think is too explicit because if we should change it sometime, what training we are required. It, I don't think it should list that Nevada councils. It should just say, uh, training mandated by the board or?
It's recommended by the State Library. I'm not sure why it says Nevada Council on Libraries and Literacy, but it's recommended by the State Library.
I'm trying to.
So, so then maybe, maybe just put that, that, uh, trainings recommended by the State Library shall be completed?
Yeah, but I agree it shouldn't say two months. I think there needs to be a little more flexibility.
I'm trying to find it.
Uh, there's no page number on it, so.
I know.
It's, the top of the pages, A, establish, supervise, and maintain the county library.
Okay. I think I've even lost that page. So, okay, well, okay, here it is. I got it. This is hard to keep up, but. Okay.
And, and how about each trustee must complete the training recommended by the Nevada State Library?
What do we, um, do you want to give with any timeline, so they can't do it in four years?
Well, yeah, I was just getting that first part of it because it's not the Nevada Council.
Okay.
And I like the word recommend.
Yeah.
Recommended by the Nevada State Library.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And I don't think we need to put two months on there. I think we should just leave it open.
Well, I'd like to, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I would say within six months because I think that's plenty of time to do it and we'd like new members on the board to have that training.
I would, I would say within six months of appointment.
Appointment, yeah.
And I think that's very important, that then the trustees, their first year, they understand what's happening in the board and, uh, and how the board operates.
So people prefer of appointment to of attending the first meeting?
I think we said within six months of appointment.
So each trustee must complete the training recommended by the Nevada State Library within six months of appointment to the board.
To the board, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, Kate, was that it?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, um, number O, right, or letter O, right after that, where it says regularly review the physical and building needs of the library. What, what exactly does that mean?
Where are you, Amy?
Right after the part that, um, Kate was just discussing, she was talking about letter N. And I'm talking about letter O, the very next one.
Well, uh, that's, that's in the law, and I think that just means that we are aware, we can propose, uh, new buildings or repair of buildings if we needed for other programs and things, so. So I don't, I don't see that's a problem. Cause the buildings are the responsibility of the board overall. So. Okay. Is there further discussion? Okay, is there a motion? I guess I made one, didn't we? Need a second.
Well, I, I, I have one more question and this might be for Cynthia, I'm not sure. But in section nine, um, letter B, there's nothing wrong with it. I'm just asking about the wording of it. Um, it says the library board shall have exclusive control of the expenditure of all monies collected, donated, or appropriated for the library fund and shall audit and approve all library expenditures, as well as approve all grant submissions. And I think the first part there might need a little tweaking because, um, sometimes the, the county will change things without the board.
Well, I don't think, uh.
So Cynthia Gregory from the DA's office is, so, um, Amy, this is talking about the expenditure. I understand that the, the county commission has control over the, the budget. So I'm not quite sure that I understand, um, the concern with regards to that.
Well, I guess I'm just concerned about the word exclusive because, um, for instance, I have authority up to a certain dollar amount to make expenditures. And sometimes the county will charge or transfer our funds, um, without the board. And, and that's okay. There's nothing wrong with any of those things. I just think that the word exclusive might be, um, might be too limiting.
How about overall instead?
Or just, we have, we do have a control and over the transfers. So even you have expenditures up to certain, but if, if you're going to transfer money from one account to another, that's comes under the board's control of the budget. And, um, so I, I don't see a problem with it, really.
Or we could just remove the word exclusive, shall have control.
Yeah.
I like the word overall. I think that's better. Um.
And I believe monies is misspelled.
I, yes. I didn't write this one.
Um, well, I think of all funds. Why don't you say funds instead of money?
Well, then it says all funds collected, donated, or appropriated for the library fund.
It want, take out the second fund. Would that be okay, Cynthia?
Yeah, I'm just taking a look at the NRS real quick because it does talk about fund and that you do have the requirement to audit and those kind of things. Um, so I was trying to figure out. So I think fund is appropriate. And then I think he just wanted to remove the exclusive from the, the beginning that it, it, it establishes that you guys, as trustees, have control over the monies and are responsible for the auditing of any of the funds associated with the library.
Okay. So we said overall control of the expenditure of all funds and then take out the second fund.
So keep monies and keep the second fund is my opinion.
Okay. Well, how do you spell monies?
M-O-N-I-E-S.
I, yes.
I, yes. Okay.
I, I have, um, while we're on this area, it feels like there might be a word left. I, I have, while we're on this area, it feels like there might be a word left out. If we go, if we jump down from, we're right, we just went over B on nine, and if we jump down to D, it says, "Any budget transfer request must be accompanied by supporting." And then, as far as I can see...
It's on the next page, documentation.
Oh, I see, okay. I was looking for that, and okay, got it. Okay, we're all good.
Okay, but my question is...
I lost the flow. My fault. On C on that item, is the amount still $10,000?
I don't know. Transfers don't have a limit for me. So for instance, if I request a transfer, it doesn't have to be under a certain amount. It's expenditures that have to be under 10,000 for me to approve.
Okay, that's what I was confusing it with then.
Yeah, it's not transfers. Transfers can be any amount.
Well, I think we leave that in there because, and again, this has been an issue a couple of times. And when large transfers are made from one budget category to another, it, it creates issues and that, and I think we just, the board has to approve those transfers, and...
Well, this is something that we've always done that way, so this would be a new thing.
Well, I know.
Well, it's, the reason I'm asking is because I have to submit transfers to the Finance Department, and if they have a problem with it, they will definitely kick it back.
I don't think we should kick it back. I, um, and this is, it requests them more than, or submitted to the library approval before they're submitted to the Finance Department. And, and that way the board's kept in the loop about what's going on, not kick back after it happens.
Okay.
And I don't think that'll create a problem, but I think it's just good procedure that board understands where the monies are going. I think the problem is, I've got them all, the pages front and back, I can't keep them together.
That's where I was. I was having trouble tracking, so...
Yeah. So... Other comments? Okay, do we have a second now?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay, is there further discussion?
Are we going to bring this back with all the changes to make sure we have it right? Or are we voting today to do this with the changes?
We can vote to bring it, but it's okay to bring it back.
Because I'd like to see it brought back with out all the red stuff, with just the bylaws with these changes and page numbers so we can follow along.
And not, and not front, not on two-sided, so we can keep track.
Yes, two-sided. Don't waste paper.
I know, but then we, when we print it, we can...
But if there's page numbers, we won't get lost.
Yeah. And like I said, can, can we do it?
I will withdraw my motion, and do we have a motion that this be brought back to the board for action at the next meeting with the revision?
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I really appreciate it because this has been a long endeavor and one that needs to be done, so...
Yes, and I had looked it up. We had it eight times in 2019 on our agenda and three times in 2020, so I really would like to get this done.
Okay, thank you then. Item number eight for possible action. Discussion and possible action on the library's long-range plan. Discussion topics may include development of a timeline for creating, creating a new long-range plan, previous goals, and/or the board member's expectations.
This was discussed at my last two-on-one meeting with Chairperson Rogers and Vice Chair Martin Mayer. And one of the suggestions was made that I bring to the board the previous goals and achievements throughout the long-range plan, starting in 2011. And so that was one of the things I was hoping that the board would discuss today.
But we have the two goals. Do we have the achievements?
No, I wanted to know if the entire board wanted that and what format and what they would like to see.
Well, I think when we discussed it in our two-on-one, you mentioned that there is existing records of objectives for each of the two goals. So there's a series of objectives that were established, and there is a record of, you know, achievements against those objectives. And the thought in reviewing them is that it's useful to see, A, what we signed up for in the past, and B, what we delivered. If some of the things that we signed up for were, for whatever the reason, postponed, you know, delayed, or abandoned because, you know, who knows, who knows why, you know? Good reasons, whatever it may be, then it's a good jumping off point for determining what our future goals and objectives will be as we go into the planning process. So essentially, it's a postmortem, which seemed to make sense. And since they are available, I believe you said, it does require some work to pull them out of the files, I guess, and print them out and organize them, but they are there on record. I know I wasn't around when they were developed. It would be useful to me to see them, you know, and use that as a jumping off point. So I believe, Bonnie, you felt the same way. I'm not sure how other trustees feel, but that was our thinking.
So each year, usually, I think in August, isn't Amy, we get a list of what was accomplished under the goals. I know you'd have to pull together the 10 years, just compile them. That would be interesting to me as a document to have, to see over those 10 years how, what we did do, and as we prepare for the next five years and then...
And I, I'm not sure if it was August. I thought it was September, but it's...
Either one of those.
Yeah. And then in November, we would adopt new objectives for the coming year.
Yeah.
So can we get both of those, the objectives that were put in place for the new year, and then the list of accomplishments?
Yes.
So we can compare the two?
Sure.
Do we need to take action on that?
Do we need a motion to, to, you know, to ask that this be prepared? Or is it, is discussion sufficient?
Cynthia Gregory from the District Attorney's Office, it is listed for possible action. And if you do want it brought back in a certain month or something like that, I would suggest that you go ahead and make a motion, and therefore, it's very clear from the record what's, what the board expects and when.
Gotcha.
Do you have to make a motion? No, legally, you don't have to make a motion.
Thank you. Well, I will make a motion that we, um, that we request Director Dodson to prepare, how do we say this, to prepare objectives and achievements against objectives representing the past 10 years from 2011. And that should be presented to the board by, what's a fair time?
Um, let's see. Either March or April is fine.
All right, well, let's seize the day and call it March then, if it's, if it's doable. So that's my motion. Should I repeat it? Okay.
Okay, who seconded?
Mm-hmm.
Who seconded?
Kate seconded it.
Okay, Kate did, okay. All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, very good.
Could I ask for a break right now, Bonnie?
Okay, I, oh, we have, it's already 11:17. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Item number nine is for discussion only. Discussion of State Library's online training for Nevada library trustees and review of completed modules. Last year, what, last year, what, this must have been 2019, too. The, the State Library had developed a training manual for trustees, and all of the trustees at that time completed the modules. And so now Elizabeth and Heather, have you received the modules?
Um, I'll jump in. I'd received them from Amy, and I will be able to have them completed in about two weeks. I'm almost there to my certification, so...
Thank you, that's good.
I'm partway through. I think I'm on module four now.
Okay, even for current trustees, it's helpful to go back and look through them again. So if anybody wants to do that, I go back or watch along, check to see what they had to say, and, uh... But they're valuable for what the responsibilities of the trustees are in each direction, or each category, and... Any other discussion on that?
Jill told me to share with the board that she's completed eight out of the 12 modules so far.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other discussion, then we'll move on to item 10. For possible action, discussion and possible action regarding approval of fiscal year '21-'22 budget. The base budget, supplemental requests, new personnel requests, capital improvement projects. So Amy, I'll turn that over to you. So Scott?
Thank you. So in your packet, there's a spreadsheet of our services and supplies proposed budget. But to start at the beginning, the county has said that we should start with our base budget. The base budget is based on fiscal year 1920's actual expenditures. And so what we do, what we're instructed to do is to use that as our base.
1920?
Yes, 1920, not 2021, two years back.
Oh, okay.
That's the way it's always done, or well, in the last couple of years.
Okay.
So we start with that as our base, and then add whatever increased costs or changes that we need to make in order to develop this proposed budget. It is the board's requirement to vote and approve a budget to present to the county that will be ultimately presented to the county commissioners. Separate from that base budget, there are also the possibilities of supplemental requests for things that are above and beyond our regular services and supplies, and then requests for new personnel if necessary, and then capital improvement projects, which I'll save until the end. But so far in this budget preparation season, there've been a couple of trainings that I've attended. One was about capital improvement projects, one was just about the budget in general. And then next week, there's a meeting about cost allocations. But to start with services and supplies, I've carried over the amounts from the 1920, and I've also included a column about fiscal year 1819, just for comparison's sake. There have been a few changes, but for the most part, it's pretty self-explanatory. I've included a tiny little description of each line, in case you're wondering. what that might have related to in the past and if there was any need for anything, you know. Apparently, there's not, but I just was curious about what that line was all about. Well, actually, small projects is kind of like a catch-all for anything else that's not covered here, but involves a, a one-time kind of project or improvement. In other words, it's not an annual ongoing expense. What I usually do is, once I see the revenue that's been allowed, if there's anything left, I put it in small projects and then we'll save that there until we decide what to do with it. But I don't usually have any money to put in that upfront, because we're using the previous year as a base budget. So, again, it's not, there's nothing specific that I anticipate for that line, but it could come up later on.
So our base budget to submit to the county would be six hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight dollars and one penny.
No, oh, sorry, finish your sentence, sorry.
And so, but our proposed budgets will be six hundred and twenty-eight thousand five, so we're about fifteen hundred over the base budget request, but we can submit that.
Yes, we can. Other departments have already submitted their budgets, but thankfully, our finance department recognizes that the library board must vote on this and so it has not been submitted yet. But that's what we're here to decide today, unfortunately, we don't get very much time anymore to do this, so we kind of have to decide today. And I'll just also note that I highlighted a couple of lines that we don't have any control over, in the pink highlights, for instance, we don't have any control over the price of janitorial services because the county does that contract, unless we decide to hire our own, which I don't recommend. The motor pool expense is determined by the motor pool and that may change and actually, the janitorial could change also. The risk management insurance line, again, is determined by the county, so that may change a little bit. That, I do not have the new numbers for insurance for the coming year. I just entered last year's amount until we know what it's going to be. And, and as I said, that'll be done by the county and it'll just appear at some point. And then last but not least, I'd like to talk about cost allocations for just a second, especially with new members on the board. Cost allocations fall under the line of admin and overhead, which is the last line on page one. Again, those are costs that we don't have much control over, but just to do a quick review, cost allocations are charges from within the county for the various services that they provide to the departments. So for instance, it would include things like building maintenance or IT, if it's another department. Our old telephone system used to be part of admin and overhead and so on. This year, they're having a meeting slash training next week. If I looked at it right, it looks like our cost allocations went down a teeny-tiny bit, but the cost allocations are a very sticky point, it's our largest budget item besides books and a lot of the cost allocation plan needs work. For instance, they do charge us for things that we shouldn't be charged for and so I usually have to go back and review that with them. For instance, they'll charge us for IT, but we have our own IT department, they'll charge us for email, but we do our own email and so on and so it's, it's part of the budget process, it's usually kind of difficult, but we're doing it a little differently this year. I know the county hired a different consultant to come up with the cost allocation, so we'll know more about that next week. But it's something that i- is usually a hot discussion item during budget season, simply because it's, it's not any charges that we can control and we're different from other departments. Because we don't use all the same county services that the other county departments use.
Okay, is there further discussion or comments about the proposed budget? Is there anything you want to change on this before there's a vote taken and we submit it to the Board of County Commissioners?
I wanted to ask Amy why some of them were highlighted in gray.
Oh, thank you, um, the ones that are highlighted in gray, we, I think that that meant, those are things that we can't move around. Yeah, that's what I did, sorry, I've done a lot of spreadsheets in the last few days. No, the gray highlights mean that we can't change them or we shouldn't change them. For instance, our utilities or our phone bill or what have you, those are things that we can change, but I've included the correct amount.
You still have to pay them.
You still have to pay them, right.
Amy, I have a question, it's on our next, coming up on our future or another part on the, the lockers. But does this budget include then what that annual cost is going to be?
No, not yet, but once we vote on the next item, I can add that in before I submit it. So you would still be approving that, just under a different agenda item number.
Well, I think it should be on this budget.
Oh, it will be, but I can't put it on there until I know what the board decides on the next item.
What, what category? Discuss the lockers and then come back to this in a few minutes?
Yeah. Uh, I think so, I think that's okay, is that okay Cynthia? Yeah, okay.
Okay, well.
Yes, we could do that.
Let's do that, because I don't want to submit two different budgets to the commissioners.
No.
What category would it fall under, Amy?
Uh, equipment maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Or maintenance equipment is what it's called on the sheet. Before we go that far though, I'll just mention that if we do have any supplemental requests, I'll need you to give me those today, as well as new personnel requests. Now, capital improvement projects are going to come a little bit later, but we are meeting to train on that. Or we just met to train on that, so that deadline will be determined. But I don't know of any capital improvement projects that the board is wanting to do right now. I also don't recommend any new personnel requests and I don't know of any supplemental requests. Now supplemental requests are for things that are usually a one-time unusual type of project or expense that's outside of the, the daily operational budget. And I don't know of any supplemental requests that we have, but the board can certainly determine those today.
Well, I think under capital improvement, that's last meeting, we talked about carpeting for the Minden Library and shelving and.
And the cover for the book drop.
Yes.
Right, yeah, we were talking about that as part of our adjusted opening balance and those would be capital projects, so if you want me to include those in the requests, I certainly will. But I didn't want to submit that without your approval.
What else did we have on that, we had the shelving, the carpeting.
The roof over the book drop.
Was that, was that, was that?
I think so, yes.
But I think those should be included as capital requests, so at least they know that we're still interested in doing it.
You've got it.
And they could fund them.
Well, they may come from our adjusted open fund balance.
Well, they may, but at least.
But they may not, yeah, so we'll find out.
That we're asking for money to do that. Any other comments on this? Okay, let's move down to item number eleven to talk about the discussion and possible action to select and prove a vendor for the book locker projects to provide better service and more options for the public to pick up library materials on hold. And Amy, I'll start off because I have a, I have a question, I could not understand. It seems to me like we're ordering, I don't know, are we ordering two of the same thing for both, I mean?
No, no, we're not, I'll help explain the quotes. We've received quotes from three companies, a fourth company's quote was so far above our budget that I didn't include it. It would have been way too much, they were asking for about forty thousand per unit, which would mean a cost of about eighty thousand, so I didn't even include that quote. I did take this with these three quotes to IRC last week and they approved it to move forward, which means the next step after today will be to take it to a commissioners' meeting for final approval. Okay, so about the quotes, as you can see, they're all very different from each other in terms of the information that they included. What was your question, Bonnie?
Well, I was trying to figure out what we're buying.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Because it, it looks really, I mean, I tried to figure it out and I thought, because we, the first two are the same thing and the second two and then services and.
Right.
Service, that's thirty-seven hundred and forty-five hundred dollars a year, is that for one unit or?
No, okay, so the quotes are for two units, one at Minden and one at Lake Tahoe. The board had asked to do a smaller unit at Lake Tahoe than in Minden and so the quotes are for both of those locations. When it says the main unit, that's the one that has the computer in it and the touchscreen and the library card scanner and so on. And then it's a modular system, all of them are, so if you want to add more mailboxes or whatever you want to call them, book boxes, book lockers, then you would add on another module. And so in Minden, the module that we discussed at the last library meeting was a main unit with two additional modules added on, so it's three pieces that come together. And so on the quote from DTEC, it's the first one that says, hold it secure main unit, et cetera, et cetera, that's for the Minden Library and then skip a line down to where it says fifteen bay locker unit, white finish, there's a quantity of two. So it would be the first item and the third item put together into one unit. And then up at the lake library, it would be one main unit with one additional module of fifteen lockers. And so the, the quote is written in a little bit of a confusing way, but that's what we had discussed at the last meeting, was to have a smaller unit at the lake and a sort of average-sized unit at the Minden Library. Does that help answer your question?
Well, part, but then we're getting thirty-nine locker units for Minden.
Okay.
And twenty-four locker units for the lake.
Right.
That seems like a lot to me, I think, do we need thirty-nine? We have no idea how much is going to be used, so do we need to buy additional monitor, I mean lock, modules? If we buy, the first one has nine lockers, right?
No, yes, it has nine lockers plus.
And then we buy a module of fifteen.
Right, so that's twenty-four.
And so do we need thirty-nine?
Bonnie, could we look at each quote before we get into that level of detail?
Okay, yes.
Okay, so the staff and I, several of us have seen demos of all three of these types of units. I can tell you that the quote from Smeota, it says Smeota Bradford Systems, the big long quote, that was the one that really will not meet our needs, but I did get the quote because we have to get quotes. But they don't meet our requirements for patron privacy and it's not a system that is really used for libraries. They make mail lockers and mailboxes and they just happen to sell to libraries, so they're not really built for libraries specifically, whereas the units from Biblioteca and DTEC are used and built for libraries and they contain all the features that we would need. So I would like to just sort of disregard the Smeota quote unless you have questions about it. Out, between Biblioteca and DTEC, the Biblioteca unit was much, much better. It has a lot more functions that we like, it seems to be a better system altogether. They have many, many, many of them in place across the country, they're a very well-known company and I think their maintenance costs are a little bit less than DTEC. I might have that wrong, but anyway, DTEC is also a really good system. That's the one that the Carson City Library purchased, so we know that it will work with our system. which would mean a cost of about eighty thousand. So I didn't even include that quote. Um, I did take this, uh, with these three quotes to IRC last week. Um, and they approved it to move forward, um, which means the next step after today will be to take it to a commissioner's meeting for final approval. Um, okay, so about the quotes, um, as you can see, they're all very different from each other in terms of the information that they included. Um, what was your question, Bonnie?
Well, I was trying to figure out what we're buying.
Uh, okay, sorry.
Because it, it looks really, I mean, I tried to figure it out and I thought, because we, the first two are the same thing and the second two, and then, uh, services and, uh,
Right.
Service predict, that's thirty seven hundred and forty five hundred dollars a year. Is that for one unit or?
No. Okay, so the quotes are for two units, one at Minden and one at Lake Tahoe. The board had asked to do a smaller unit at Lake Tahoe, um, than in Minden. And so the quotes are for, um, both of those locations. When it says the main unit, that's the one that has the computer in it and the touchscreen and the library card scanner and so on. And then it's a modular system, all of them are. So if you want to add more mailboxes or whatever you want to call them, book boxes, book lockers, then you would add on another module. And so in Minden, um, the module that we discussed at the last library meeting was, um, a main unit with two additional, um, modules added on. So it's three pieces that come together. And so on the quote from DTEC, um, it's the first one, um, that says, hold it secure main unit, et cetera, et cetera. That's for the Minden Library and then skip a line down to where it says fifteen bay locker unit, white finish. There's a quantity of two. So it would be the first item and the third item put together into one unit. And then up at the lake, uh, library, it would be one main unit with one additional module of fifteen lockers. And so the, the quote is written in a little bit of a confusing way. Uh, but that's what we had discussed at the last meeting was to have a smaller unit at the lake and a, a sort of, uh, average size unit at the Minden Library. Um, does that help answer your question?
Well, but then we're getting thirty nine locker units for Minden.
Okay.
And twenty four locker units for the lake.
Right.
That seems like a lot to me. I think, uh, do we need thirty nine? We have no idea how much it's gonna be used. So do we need to buy additional monitor? I mean, lock, uh, modules? If we buy, the first one has nine lockers, right?
No, that, yes, it has nine lockers.
And then we buy a module of fifteen.
Right, so that's twenty four.
And so do we need thirty nine?
Bonnie, could we look at each quote before we get into that level of detail?
Okay, yes.
Okay, so the staff and I, several of us have seen demos of all three of these types of units. I can tell you that the quote from Smeota, um, it says Smeota Bradford Systems, the big long quote. Uh, that was the one that really will not meet our needs, but I did get the quote because we have to get quotes. Um, but they don't meet our requirements for patron privacy. And it's not a system that is really used for libraries. They make mail lockers and mailboxes and they just happen to sell to libraries. So they're not really built for libraries specifically. Whereas the units from Biblioteca and DTEC are used and built for libraries. And they contain all the features that we would need. Um, so I would like to just sort of disregard the Smeota quote unless you have questions about it. Um, outs, uh, between Biblioteca and DTEC, the Biblioteca unit was much, much better. Um, it has a lot more functions that we like. Um, it seems to be a better system altogether. Um, they have many, many, many of them in place across the country. Um, they're a very well-known company. Um, and I think their maintenance costs are a little bit less than DTEC. Um, I might have that wrong, but anyway, DTEC is also a really good system. Um, that's the one that the Carson City Library purchased. So we know that it will work with our system, both of them will really. Um, and so really, it's just a matter of the board making a decision. As, as you can see on the DTEC quote, this is a new quote. It's different than the one you got at the last meeting. She sent me this a couple of days ago, uh, because I think their price has changed in twenty twenty-one. And so it's just a thousand dollars over what you had originally approved. Um, with Biblioteca, it's much lower than what you approved. Um, well, not much, but significantly below the amount that you approved. Um, and so my recommendation and the staff's preference was for Biblioteca. But I can answer questions about all of them.
And am I reading this correctly that for Biblioteca, we'd be getting thirty lockers in Minden and fifteen at the lake?
Uh, let's see. No, um, let's see, the central tower is the same as the other one. So it has nine lockers.
Okay, that was not.
Yeah, they didn't spell that out. Yeah. So it is the same number of lockers either way. And we have options with the sizes of the lockers. We could get fewer lockers that are bigger. Um, or the same number, which are smaller and we can mix and match. Um, that doesn't really change the price because the modules are all the same size. But they have bigger lockers that are, you know, bigger than a shoebox. Um, and we'll just have to evaluate whether or not we need bigger ones or all small ones. We can also use them for other things, by the way, um, besides books. Um, we could put crafting kits in them for people to come and pick up, uh, and take home. Um, we can put together, um, like the reading club, book club kits. Those can go in there for a book club to pick up. Um, we can do any kind of customer request, like say if a customer asks us over the phone, um, for some research on a particular topic, then everything that we print from the internet or pull from the shelf on that topic that they want for their research, we can put that in the locker. Uh, we can do interlibrary loans. Um, there's all kinds of nifty things we could do with them.
And would we need the larger lockers for children's picture books?
Possibly. Um, the picture books will fit in terms of depth when they lay down like this. Um, the difference is the number of books that will fit this way. So all the lockers are the same width and depth, but not the same height. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So based on that, I'm thinking it's probably better to get the smaller lockers. And if somebody has a lot of things, we put it in two lockers.
Okay.
Because it seems like that would give us more flexibility.
It would. Um, and it doesn't change the price, as I said.
And am I reading this?
If we went with Bibliotech, we would have, what, one fifteen slot module and one nine?
No, we have a, well, at Minden, yes. Um, we would have two of the fifteen lockers and one with nine. So twenty-four. Um, or no, excuse me, thirty-nine. And then up at the lake, it would be twenty-four.
I just don't see that we need thirty-nine modules here. We can always add on later.
You can. Um,
But I think we need to start and, and see how they're used.
And are, are, am I reading this right that we're gonna have to pay seventy four hundred and seventy dollars a year for the, uh, maintenance fees and the software license?
Yeah, the software license covers all of them. Um, the other ones are broken down by unit. And yes, that's correct. Um, but before we decide on numbers, um, I would like for Julia to join the conversation and talk a little bit about how many holds we have per day and how many hold pickups. Because we have a ton of holds every day and it's getting bigger and bigger. Um, and so that would help us determine the number of lockers to have. Julia?
Yeah, currently in Minden, we have about three hundred, three hundred items on hold for patrons to come pick up. Um, and so this would give more flexibility to patrons to come and pick up at any time. So they don't have to rush over on their lunch hour. They could come after work. They could come, um, those swing shift and, and night shift people could come, um, when, when they have time available and the library isn't open. Um, and we, we definitely have a huge increase in the number of, of hold items that are held. Um, I do also know that, uh, both in, um, Carson and in Elko, uh, as well as in Washoe, their lockers are very, very popular and they are all being used currently.
How many do they have, Julia?
They, they have the, the same number that we're requesting. They have the thirty-nine, um, in Carson.
Elko has Biblioteca and Carson has DTEC, so.
And on the DTEC, it's forty-five hundred a year for the licensing and stuff?
Yes, and thank you for asking that. It reminded me, the first year of service and maintenance is included in the purchase. So it's like a warranty. We have a twelve-month warranty on everything, um, including the, the service and the software and so on. And so these costs would not kick in for yet another fiscal, fiscal year.
And that's true for both quotes?
That's correct. It's true for all of them, actually. Um,
So I guess the question is, do we want to pay less initially and more yearly? Or more initially and less yearly?
Well, that's true. Um, honestly, going by the recommendations of other library directors, I think we'd be happy either way. But having seen the demos, um, and consulting with several of our staff, including our IT coordinator, um, Biblioteca is, is far better technically and has a lot more options. Um, they even have transparent lockers where we could someday put like a, a grab and go kind of feature. Um, you can see through the door of the locker and see what's in there. And if you want it, you can just check it out. It's kind of cool. Um, but anyway, I, I think quality-wise Biblioteca is better. Um, I know that the service costs, um, in coming years are a concern, but, um, to give you a basis of comparison, we have to pay monthly or annual service fees and licenses for about half of our budget items. Because it's, it's a new thing. As, as I'm sure you've noticed, subscription services are on the rise. And library companies are no different. So for instance, our integrated library system, which is Polaris, and that's our checkout and inventory system, um, their annual fees go up every year and this year it's twenty-one thousand dollars. That's for software. That is all software. And then we have fees for our firewall and our email filters and our, you know, so many things. So annual fees and, and, and subscriptions and things like that are growing exponentially. And it's just kind of a fact of life now.
Well, I myself, I myself would like to see us maybe try it at the Tahoe branch and hold off on doing the Minden branch, just to see how well it's used.
Well, that's different than what was approved.
But in the long run, I think that, I mean, if we do add Minden later, it's gonna end up costing us more, I think, because of having them come out for another install and that sort of thing.
Yeah, the installation would be for all of them at once on the quote. Um, and Elizabeth's exactly right. We would have to pay installation and freight and everything else all over again. And we can move them, by the way. If, if we needed more modules, um, up at the lake and, and fewer in Minden, we could move those. It would cost us something, but we could do that. It is possible.
I, I just think that we, instead of starting with thirty-nine at Minden, we need to see how it's used. And if we have the basic unit and then one fifteen locker.
Hmm.
Well, the same comment applies. We would need to pay for freight and installation again.
I mean, we have, I know we have holds in the library, but also a lot of people come in to pick up those holds. And, uh, and there is a, uh, again, discussion in the community about what we're spending money for and, and I'm, I'm cautious about that because I don't want any more controversy than I have to have. Um,
Oh, would you designate to the people, we've got three hundred holds, we're saying, like, at any given moment. So how would you designate then which of those holds go to the book lockers? Would that be an extra request, like hold? And then you add something to the system that says boot locker, I'm boot, book locker by request? So I'm, I'm just scratching my head on that, you know?
It is by request. So the patron would be given the option, just like they are now, of where to pick up their hold. So at the moment, they have the choice of either the Minden Library or the Lake Tahoe Library or the Bookmobile. Um, but that's all. So if they wanted to, to pick it up from the locker, they can simply request it. Of course, when it's new, we will offer that because a lot of people won't know about it. Um, but it's all done by request and it's not an extra step. It's the same as if they wanted to pick up their hold anywhere else.
Yeah, so we just add two more checkboxes.
Right.
Locker at Minden, locker at the lake.
Exactly.
Yeah. And then especially because the Zephyr Cove Library is only open two days a week. Uh, I think there might be more need there, certainly.
The, the difference would be that if I request, um, my hold at Minden, which I actually have one sitting there right now at the Minden Library, there is no limit on the number of, you know, of, yeah, I'm guaranteed to have a hold there. But if every, if I request a book locker, but the thirty-nine or the twenty-five are full, wh- is the system going to keep a, a counter and then refuse to allow me to click that box? Or, um, so?
No.
So.
I don't know. Julia might know, but I don't think Polaris would deny it. I'm not sure. If you were on the phone, of course, requesting it from a live human being, they could tell you, I'm sorry, the book locker's full. Um, we can, you know, try again tomorrow or you can pick it up somewhere else. Or, you know, we would give you your options.
Right.
Um, but I'm not sure if there's an automated feature that tells you when it's full. Is there, Julia?
There is, yes. And, um, it's, it's a little technical, but the book lockers would be set up as branches in Polaris, um, our integrated library system. Um, and so it just would not, if the book locker was full, it would not trigger, um, for us to pull the holds or have the hold available for you until there was space in the book locker again.
So it just wouldn't show up as an option when I'm choosing where I want to hold it?
It would still show up as an option. You just would not get notified that your hold is ready to pick up in the book locker until there was space available in the book locker.
So it would delay your access to what you've requested?
Yes, that's correct.
Which is
Okay.
A good argument for a larger unit. That way it wouldn't fill up as quickly.
Okay, I, 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 I get where you're going with this.
Is there further discussion? Do we have a, a motion for which one you want to recommend?
Well, as I said, I, I recommend Biblioteca over DTEC. Um, the price is a little bit smaller upfront. Um, but I think it's technically superior to the DTEC unit. Uh, and again, our IT coordinator agrees that technically speaking, the Biblioteca unit is better.
What is the total cost for Bibliotech?
It's, um, let's see, thirty, fifty-two thousand roughly. And the board had, um, given a limit of fifty-five thousand last month. Um, at DTEC, it's fifty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. So it's a four thousand dollar difference roughly. Um, and I think it's really important that we get the right number of units at the get-go so that we're not paying extra freight, extra installation, et cetera. Um, both of these are gonna be inside, by the way. Uh, we've determined, after talking to all these vendors, that it's a bad idea to put one outside in our climate. Um, it's just not meant to be exposed to a lot of moisture and, and cold, uh, in the wintertime. And even though they would be covered, um, in terms of having like a canopy over them, uh, it's really not the best situation. And so if we want it to last longer and not have, um, you know, weather to deal with, we would put them in the lobby so that people could come inside to pick them up, kind of like an ATM in the lobby of a bank. Um, you know, they wouldn't gain access to the library, of course. Um, but they would be in, in the entryway so that they would be out of the elements, which is nice for the patron, um, but still accessible twenty-four hours a day.
So where would that be in Minden? I mean, at the lake, I know there's.
There's vending machines on one side of the foyer. When you walk in, the first set of double doors, there's a vending machine on the right. And then on the left is empty space. So we would put it in that empty space on the left. It would be visible from the parking lot. So people would know exactly where it is. Um,
And that space on the left is big enough?
Yes, we've measured, we've checked all the electrical and so on. Um, only thing we'll need to do is run some data lines, but we can do that in-house. So that's no extra cost to us. Um, and at, at the Lake Library, it would be in the lobby, uh, where the book sale area is. We might have to rearrange a couple of bookshelves, but it will go in the lobby as well.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And of course, that's a bigger lobby than Minden.
Right.
The front doors to the library, both libraries, would have to be open twenty-four seven.
Hmm.
Now, at Tahoe, at Zephyr Cove, where that book sale is, if you're in that lobby, then the rest of that building's open.
No, it's not. There's another set of doors going into the library.
Because the door's into the library and to the room, but that, that lobby area. I know we let the, uh, tennis people come in to use the bathrooms and things. But that leaves the rest, I think, I see that leaving the rest of your library vulnerable for that.
No, there's a door with an alarm on it that leads into the library.
What about into the conference room?
Yeah.
That'll be locked. That's always locked.
And so the front door to the Minden Library, which is locked now.
Hmm.
And so then it would just be the door after they, you know, come into that area. I just have concerns about that, too.
I don't. We don't have a,
I don't either.
Have a problem with vandalism or theft. Um, you know, in, in other libraries where I've worked, that would be a concern. But here, I think our only, um, issue might be chipmunks at the lake. There's squirrels might come in, but they do that anyway. So. Um, no, I don't think that there's any vulnerability to be worried about.
What is the annual cost of Bibliotech? I can't, I see it says a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year.
It's about seventy-four hundred.
I, I just, I don't want to commit the library to seventy-four hundred dollars a year for the next five years.
It's not for five years. It's for however long we want. You can stop paying for maintenance and service at any time. It's not a five-year commitment. So you could do one year and then decide, okay, we'll maintain it ourselves.
And what does maintaining it incur, you know, what's involved in that?
Well, it means that if there were a technical issue, um, like with the, the barcode scanner or the computer that checks out the items, that would mean that our IT people would be the ones to repair it. And if we needed the vendor to make repairs, we could pay for that a, as a one-time thing.
Um, but we have to pay the hundred and seventy-five dollars a year no matter what?
That's correct. And that's much less than, um, DTEC because DTEC combines the software license with all the other support and maintenance. So it would be forty-five hundred or nothing. So that's another advantage to Bibliotech I should have mentioned, uh, before now. Um, we can pay the software license fee every year of a hundred and seventy-five dollars for both units. And then say in year three or year four, whenever, um, you can decide that you don't want the maintenance package anymore and we'll just maintain it ourselves. Or pay for them to repair it just on an as-needed basis.
Have you heard from the other libraries on what, you know, how often they've had to call in, you know, for maintenance or has it broken or, you know, is it working just fine or?
That's a great question. Um, the Elko Library has, has just purchased there, so they don't have any issues yet. Theirs is too new. And then Carson City just installed theirs a month or so ago. And from what I've heard, the only problems they had were, um, just little bugs in the, um, integrated library system and how it talks to the book lockers. But that was just a technical issue that they were able to resolve themselves. It, it was pretty minor. But that was just a technical issue that they were able to resolve themselves. It, it was pretty minor.
How many did lockers do they have?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine instead of thirty-nine?
Shoot. They have a main unit and two other modules, so they have the three modules. Which is thirty-nine, sorry.
Okay, is there further discussion? Is there a motion?
I move that we get the Biblioteca with thirty-nine units or lockers in Minden and twenty-four lockers at Zephyr Cove.
Is there a second? Do we have a second to the motion?
I, the only reason I'm not seconding it, and I'm just sitting here thinking is, I mean, I love the concept of adding something new and innovative. And I know we've already approved the idea and the money that's been set aside. It's just kind of, I find it kind of a scary leap because the other, you know, libraries that are doing this are as new as we are. And all, you know, there've been all, the rationale for doing it is great. And, you know, it's very compelling when you think of three hundred holds and this could be a way. And I know I would use it personally, okay, so. But the only reason I'm not jumping in and saying second is it just makes me nervous because, um, I don't know, it just makes me nervous to, um, at a time when, you know, but the budget is tight and we're always so cost-conscious. I know we've already like approved it, but it just, I feel, um, you know, I, I guess I just feel nervous about it.
So remember that without a second, no vote happens. With a second, it can be voted down.
I, I have reservations about the number for Minden. And, uh, I have, uh, concern about the annual maintenance things and, uh, because we're committing the, the library, you know, board in the future to this expense. And, um, and I think sometimes we don't have to do what another libraries do. We need to fit what our community needs and, um, I, I, that's my concern, so.
So Cynthia Gregory from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. If there isn't a second, the motion fails for a lack of a second and another motion could come forward.
Okay, well, this motion doesn't have a second, so do we need another motion or you want to?
Real quick.
I didn't hear a second, I'm sorry. I thought it failed for lack of a second.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, so at the last meeting, it was determined that we would have a unit at both branches and that the maximum expenditure could be fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this is just a recap. Um, and I was instructed to get quotes, uh, which we have before us. Um, I, again, I recommend that we do the Thirty-Nine Towers in Minden and the Twenty-Four in Lake Tahoe. Um, because that way it's available, um, for more patrons. Um, I think it's going to be very well-used. I know with our, uh, restricted hours or even with our regular hours, um, patrons can't always come when the library is open. And that's why sometimes the holds will sit there for days and days until they can find a chance to come and pick them up. Um, because even with our longest hours, we're closed on Sundays, we're closed at night. Uh, we're closed early in the morning. Um, and I think that this would provide so many great options for so many people. Um, and as I said, it's not just books. It can be lots of things. We can get creative with it.
I have a crazy, um, question. Uh, have you, uh, at the library ever done any spot surveys of patrons where you ask like a simple, like three-question survey and you ta, you know, you just, you do like an end selection via, via Survey Monkey and, you know, get results back really fast to, um?
We haven't done that in a while, no, but we have done it.
But you've done it in the past. Um, and was it useful?
Yes and no. Um, a lot of people don't want to stop and fill out a survey, so usually our sample is pretty low. Um, the last time we did that, it was about the hours of operation at the Lake Tahoe branch. And we didn't have very many responses. Um, but, I mean, it's nice to get the feedback for sure. Uh, but people are reluctant to fill out a survey or go online to fill out a survey. I'm not sure why.
Well, typically on a blind survey like that, that's sent out, you get about a ten percent response rate.
You don't need a ton of responses to make it statistically, you know, viable, but it just would be
Oh, but it wouldn't be statistically viable if it's voluntary?
If the selection is, all surveys are, are voluntary, right? Every survey is voluntary because you always have the right to refuse to take it. So there's self-selection in every research survey to that extent.
Not always.
Well, I understand that the last meeting, we approved up to fifty-five thousand dollars. But at this meeting, we, we don't have to approve the expenditures of those funds now. I mean, we could always go back and vote on that again if we wanted to. But I just have concerns about, uh, the amount and, and the annual, um, cost in them.
So I certainly want to address all of your concerns. Um, I, I think that the annual amount, as I said, can be opted out of, um, later. And we can maintain it on our own. Um,
For Biblioteca only?
Well, yeah, that's true because the software is tied up in the DTEC quote. Um, so yeah, that's true. Um, we do have annual costs associated with almost everything, as I said earlier, whether it's software or, um, a physical item, like say our RFID checkouts or whatever. There's an annual fee for almost everything, um, with the exception of, you know, the routine kind of utility uh, commitments. And so it's just something that we'll have to budget for. But I think it's, I think it's definitely going to be worth it because I think the public is going to use it heavily. They're using it at other libraries in the area very heavily. And all of those libraries seem happy with it. And I, I just think it's something that our patrons will really enjoy.
My biggest issue with it right now is I think we are supplanting in the library hours by putting the book lockers out there. And I don't think that will be well-received until we are back to full operation at the library.
Well, by the time they get here, we probably will be back to full operation. I mean, they're not going to arrive tomorrow. It takes a little while. And they're very popular in libraries right now, so the lead time is a few weeks. Um, and so by the time they get here and get installed, we'll probably be back to our regular hours.
When, when do you think it would, it is, what would you predict the installation date to be? Like two months out or six weeks or?
Probably closer to two months, um, probably April or May. Uh, which is why it's important to make a decision now so that we don't have to wait, you know, into the summer. Um, and so by the time we have the installation, we should have our regular hours. And, and I respectfully disagree. I don't think that it supplants our hours. I think it just adds options for patrons who can't come to the library while we're open. And, a, and that's true of any library. I mean, people work twenty-four hours a day, especially in casinos and hospitals and things like that. So, uh, a lot of people would like to get services, but they work third shift or, you know, they work on the days that we're open. And I, I think it's going to provide a really good option for people.
I think perception is, uh, perception becomes reality, prevent. And what they're seeing now is we actually reduced our hours last time when we voted for the browsing hours, which I have to admit, I didn't, I got involved in the browsing part of it. And until, and we could say, and I agree with Kate, it, we, if we resume our regular hours and the, and we see a need, then we could say, okay, we'll do it. But, um, I don't want to, the perception of the public being that we're, we have fewer hours, but we're providing an outside source for you to get the material. And, and that concerns me.
Yeah, I think you have a good point, Bonnie and Heather on that, or maybe it was Kate on that perception issue, especially, you know, if we bought them last summer, the perception might be different than right now as we're trying to increase hours. It might look like we're trying to avoid increasing hours. I mean, I, I think that, that people might see it that way.
I, I think it would, it would be, there would be a better perception if we were kind of back to, you know, our old hours or close to our old hours. Um, you know, levels of service, because then it would just be a plus, you know, a, a plus-plus.
Well, this is about providing options. I, I understand what you're saying about a, a negative perception because we're doing this instead of that. But it's not. It's simply an addition. It, it, it's the same argument that we had for the Bookmobile, you know?
And I think we know that, but we're not sure the public understands that it's not a substitution, that it's an addition.
We could make that happen. I mean, we can communicate that. We can market it that way. Um, and there may be some people who think that it's one replacing the other, but I think the majority of our patrons, um, who place holds, um, are going to enjoy the extra option.
Yeah, I know I would.
The same as keeping curbside service. We're going to keep curbside service, um, even though we're open again and, and we will continue to open more hours. But curbside's not going anywhere because it's an option that people enjoy and that is convenient for them. And so I see this as just another option, just like, you know, curbside, just like the Bookmobile, you know? People who use the Bookmobile, some can get to the library and some can't, but that doesn't mean we don't need. Does that make sense? Okay. This is, the funds
The Bookmobile was to get to places where the library didn't have, they didn't have access to this.
Right, and that's exactly what this would be. Providing Right.
Well, my impression of the board's feeling on this overall is that we're, the majority are not ready to take this leap. And we also need to realize that if we put it off, the upfront costs are probably going to increase. Um, and I think there's, it seems like people are maybe interested, but in six months or a year, and that's a decision that we could make.
Yeah, I just don't understand why the enthusiasm for the project has changed. Because at first, everybody loved this idea.
Well, Bonnie, it may just be, you know, thinking about it longer that they felt that, you know?
I think, I do love the idea and I, as I said before, just, you know, it's innovative. I would use it. Um, and I, I understand everything that you're saying. And I don't disagree with anything you're saying, Amy, you know, in terms of it being an ad. It's just, it's just scary because it's quite a bit of money and commitment to something new that we don't have a lot of data on. We're all taking the plunge with our sister libraries in the area. And it, common sense would tell you that it should be a smash success. But, you know, it just
But we also have a Bookmobile that's not being fully used right now. It's just now getting back to a schedule. So I just see it as an expense that until we're fully utilizing what we already have, why would we put out for more?
Okay, uh, let me ask, would the board like to, uh, table this action to a future date?
Um, I would be comfortable with that.
Would we need a motion to table them?
Is there any other motion in addition to Elizabeth's?
Well, Elizabeth failed because there was no second.
I know, but I wondered if there was another motion.
Evidently not.
Okay.
So Cynthia Gregory, the Douglas County DA's office. So if you just wanted to table it, you know, indefinitely and then any member can put it back on the agenda, you don't need a motion. However, if you would like to continue it to three months so that maybe you can get some statistics from Carson, um, or Elko or the, the other libraries, then you would need a motion saying you want it to continue it to a specific date.
And we should also be aware that if we continue it more than to the next meeting, new quotes will have to be obtained. So these quotes will expire before the April meeting.
Correct. So does this reverse the decision that was made in January, Cynthia?
I think at that time, Amy, if I'm not correct, it, it was that the, that fifty-five thousand was taken out of the opening fund balances for capital improvement projects. So
Specifically for two book lockers, though.
Right. So I think that was for, it's for a period of time. I don't think it was just for this meeting, so I think it leaves open that option. But that's now a designated, uh, priority via that capital improvements.
Well, okay.
The Biblioteca is good for sixty days, so it would be good through March. Probably April.
Yeah, well, one would, was issued February seventeen and the other February eight for, one for thirty days and the other for sixty days.
Right. And then
Sixty days.
Two months after that, yeah.
And the other alternative is to, um, you know, approve them at a, at a lower rate. I think that was discussed as too.
And what, what was that last part?
I think having less lockers or only at one, um, branch was discussed, so that, that's an option too.
Well, I will make a motion that we table this item.
Indefinitely or with a time?
I'm trying to think of a time. I don't know, um, two months? Would we have a sense of reopening hours then?
No idea. It's the board to decide when we reopen with more hours. So you can do that anytime you want.
Well, we can put it back on the agenda in two months for future, for discussion. And then we could decide if we want to take action then. So I would make a motion that we table it for two months to the April meeting.
Um, I would second that.
Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have two, do we need him? Okay, the motion fails it. So what do you want to do with this? I don't know. Kate, did you vote yes?
No, because I, I would like to see us back to full operation in branch and the Bookmobile before we make any determination on spending this kind of money on another option.
Okay. Can I ask what changed from last month?
No, I think it's a great idea, Amy, if we were providing all the services that we used to have. But I, 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 it will be the perception that we are supplanting services by getting this. And I, I have to say, I'd agree with that. If it was possibly just the Tahoe branch because their hours are so limited.
And I agree with Kate on that. I mean, we, the year, you know, up until even this year, we had reduced hours at Tahoe, and now this year, we've reduced them now to two days. And I think that community feels kind of like we're not interested anyway. So that's just my personal opinion, so that's, so-
But even committing to that, we're committing to a good sizable amount of money upfront and then those maintenance fees.
Yes, that's my concern.
Okay.
I think then I want, I'd like to see how it's, if we need that many.
Okay, so can I make a motion that we table this until we are back to full operation in branch and on the Bookmobile?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, all of those in favor of the table motion?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passed, so. Okay.
Elizabeth, did you vote nay?
I vote nay, which was not asked for.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
On either vote.
Nay, okay. So there are three, to table it and one not to table.
Wait a minute. So you just voted three to one to wait until we're back to full operating hours? Is that right? Okay. You got that, Veronica?
Okay, now we need to go back to the budget since we're not including that, I guess.
So-
I move that we approve the budget as presented.
But do we need to do the supplemental things, Amy?
Only if you want supplemental items. Maybe there's an innovative idea that one of the board members has.
Well, I meant the cover over the capital projects. The cover over the book drop.
You're talking about capital improvement projects then, not supplementals?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay. I don't know, it was listed as a priority at a prior meeting, but those things can change. So I'll submit whatever you ask me to submit.
Well, we had the carpet and shelving and the cover and I'd have to go back to the minutes if we had, but I think those should go in as capital improvement requests because they're facility improvement requests. In the county, we were supposed to help maintain our facilities. So I would, I would ask that we include capital, those items under capital improvement.
Well, the perception would be that we care more about carpet than we do about access.
It's no, Amy, that's not so.
Okay.
But our-
Could be.
No, that was not my opinion. I am concerned about we maintain the facilities, their safety and other things, and I think that we've asked for these things for years. And I think we keep asking for them until maybe we get some action on them. So do you need a motion that we include those as capital improvement projects?
Yes.
Well, I would, I would make that motion in that we submit as capital improvement projects, the carpeting, the shelving, and that's a safety issue, is a football, and also the cover for the book drop. Book return.
So Cynthia Gregory from the District Attorney's Office, I thought we already had a motion to approve the budget as proposed?
It was not seconded.
Okay, so did it, well, the discussion ensued, so I wasn't sure if there was a second or we were in discussion. So I guess, Amy, my question is, does this budget include, would the, this budget you're proposing would include capital improvement projects?
No, it's a separate request. So no, it does not.
Okay.
It's a completely separate item. So the budget for services and supplies will be submitted according to however the board votes. But supplemental requests, personnel requests and capital improvement projects are all separate items. And so the board can decide-
I withdraw that motion on capital improvement then. So we need a motion to approve the service and supply request. Budget 20, 21, 22, proposed budget to the Board of County Commissioners. Is that your motion then, Elizabeth?
Okay, I second that.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion on the budget submission for service and supply? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, I would, I request that we submit a capital improvement budget for the shelving, the carpeting. Do we need paint?
No.
So, Madam Chair, before we move on to that, if we could just note for the record that the vote passed and what the vote was, since I'm not sure everybody's hands can be seen on the screen. So I believe it was a 4-0 vote in favor.
4-0, yes.
Thank you.
Amy, could we submit capital improvements at the March meeting?
No, we need to do those now. I'm sorry.
Well, I make a motion that we do the capital improvements for the carpet, the shelving and the book drop covering that we discussed at last month's meeting.
I second.
Let's review those dollar amounts.
We didn't have dollar amounts yet. I'll have to gather those.
I'm sorry, Veronica Hallam, for the record, who seconded that motion?
I did.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie.
Okay, all of those in favor? Hold your aye.
Aye.
Everybody voted aye.
I'm sorry, I'm still a little confused how we can, how this works without dollar amounts, I guess.
Oh, okay. With capital improvement projects, these are requests that departments put in every year to the Board of Commissioners. Sometimes they have funding available and sometimes they're asking for funding to be made available. But it's a process that we go through every year, and for many, many years running, we have been requesting the shelving and the carpeting. They were partially funded, but they've never been 100% funded. And so I would have to gather those up and submit them. But it's not something that comes out of our services and supplies budget, and it doesn't necessarily come from any of our funds. We would have to ask for those to be made available. An example is, a couple of years ago, we got a new HVAC system. It was about $800,000, and we didn't have that money, but we submitted it as a request and it was, the funding was provided by the Commissioners and the Room Tax Fund.
Okay, that's helpful. I just, I didn't understand the process, so I wasn't comfortable voting at all.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm glad you asked.
Cynthia Gregory from the DA's office. Amy, how does that work with the budget augment that came forward at the last meeting? Because I thought that that funding was for capital improvement projects.
It was specifically for the book lockers as a capital project. And that would be in this year's budget, not the one we're proposing for next year. Or at least I thought it was. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what happens to that opening fund balance, because that was my understanding.
Oh.
That it, if you didn't spend it all, that that was for, it would roll over.
It does roll over.
I don't want capital projects only.
Right, Terry, no, hold on. Terry Willoughby was at our last meeting and explained that just because we have the money, we don't have to spend it now, which I think in the past, we did have to spend it in a certain amount of time, but we don't. And so we can set that aside and simply tell them, we'd like to set this aside for future projects. And anything that we want to use now, I had to submit, which was the $55,000 for book lockers for approval. And any other additional projects, we can name those later, and that money will just sit there and wait until that is done.
So if you identified the carpet shelving and book cover, I'm assuming they would look to that money that's been rolled over to fund those capital projects?
The Commissioners might do that, yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just confused, so I want to make sure I understand.
But we also, in that vote, did the book lockers, the small equipment and furniture for $10,000, and circulating technology for $1,000, and $2,000 for China Spring.
Right, and those three amounts are under my approval authority. So now that the board has approved those funds be used for that, we can go ahead and do that without it being a capital improvement.
Or they wouldn't have been capital improvements?
No, they wouldn't.
Just one-time expenses.
Right.
Do we need to vote on? Elizabeth, I guess, are you in favor of the motion then?
I am now in favor of the motion now that I understand it.
Okay, it'd be 4-0 in favor of the motion then, okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on to item 12, discussion and possible approval with modification to revisions to update the library policies listed below.
Wait, 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 sorry, we didn't finish number 10.
No, we didn't.
I need, I need to know if the board wants to submit any supplemental requests or personnel requests. And you need to vote on those separately. So it's 10B and 10C.
Does anyone have any supplemental request or?
What would fall under a supplemental request?
A one-time type of expense that's outside of our services and supplies budget that would not be a recurring cost like personnel. And so it could be capital or not capital. It could be, I'm trying to think of examples. Usually it's personnel, but sometimes there are projects that are not capital, but they're also not part of your operations, and so those would be requested separately.
So Cynthia, do we need a motion if we have no supplemental requests we wanted to make?
Cynthia Gregory from the DA's office, I think that's what the Director is asking, just so it's clear for the record that the board doesn't have any supplemental requests or additional personnel requests.
That's correct.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for no supplemental request.
What about personnel?
Those have to be separate votes, don't they?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second then the supplemental request. There being, all those in favor?
Aye.
I can't see you, Elizabeth.
Aye.
Okay. Elizabeth, I can't see you. Are you voting?
Aye. For the third time.
Okay, is there a motion that we not submit any personnel request?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Need a motion? Do we have a second?
Yes, I seconded it. Heather?
Okay. All those in favor of not submitting personnel requests? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
And so, Madam Chair, just for purposes of the record, I think it needs to be reflected that both votes passed 4-0.
4-0, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now we can go to 12.
We can go to 12. Just for possible action discussion and possible approval or approval with modifications of revisions to update the library policies listed below. Policy revisions are needed to accurately reflect current technology, facilities and professional practices. The following policies may be discussed. Policy on cooperation with other libraries and agencies and interlibrary loan policy. Amy, would you like to discuss these?
Okay, the policy on cooperation with other libraries and agencies. I didn't make any real substantial changes to recommend. I wanted to update it and make it a little bit more clear. It basically just says that we are part of what's called Information Nevada, which is a statewide agreement among all libraries that we will share resources and provide access to their resources and ours for all people in Nevada. It's an agreement that we sign every year for the state library to confirm our participation in that effort. So I just updated the language on that. And that's it on that one. Any questions?
Excuse me, on the second line where it says the Douglas County Public Library makes every effort to cooperate, could we just say cooperates with other libraries and agency?
Oh, without the, in the provision of such services?
About every effort.
Huh?
In the first paragraph.
No, I know where we are.
Takeout makes every effort.
Oh. And just change it to cooperates, got it?
Yes. And in the second paragraph, sharing, what about leaving out the parentheses such as giving or accepting or all that in the parentheses?
So eliminate the parentheses but keep the language?
No.
No, just eliminate the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. But we'll still be able to share donated items, right?
Yeah, it just takes out the specificity or the example.
Just checking.
Yeah. Any other discussion on this policy? Is there a motion to approve?
It's Heather Almuth, approve.
Is there a second?
This policy.
I'll second.
Okay, Kate seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It approves, it's approved 4-0. Interlibrary loan policy. I have a question now, and maybe it's just the way it's written on this. Why see eligibility and limitations or? See how they're printed there?
Yes, that's just a part of the track changes feature. This is a really old document that I had to convert, and when you do track changes, sometimes it'll throw off the spacing, but once you implement the changes, it goes back to normal.
Okay.
That's just a cosmetic thing on this particular draft.
Okay, that's my, I thought, wow, I haven't seen that before, so.
And under borrowing from other libraries, the word or is that part of the crossed out before material?
Which item? Number three?
It says library staff will determine or material in the DCPL system before requesting. So just that or needs to be removed also.
Sorry, thank you.
Well, even then, it's awkward.
Library staff will determine material-
Available.
Availability. Yeah, that's better.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody know what interlibrary loan is? Okay, just checking.
I've looked. Any other changes or recommendations? Okay, is there a motion to approve the interlibrary loan policy revisions?
So moved.
Okay, Elizabeth, second?
Second.
Kate, Kate, all of those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It passed 4-0, okay. Okay, number 13. 13, for possible action, discussion and possible action to approve a grant application to the Smallwood Foundation in the amount of $9,250 for a mobile computer lab. The mobile computer lab will be used for programs for adults, teens and children. Amy, would you explain that?
Sure. This is something that I've been looking for funding for, for a long time. Basically, it's laptops in a charging cabinet that rolls around and that makes it mobile. And then you can take it to any place to set it up as a computer lab. This would allow us to have programs such as computer classes, coding clubs. This would allow us to have programs such as computer classes, coding clubs. We can have homework days where we have like a homework center, so to speak, with these laptops. And we would set them up in the meeting room or in whatever room we need in order to conduct these classes or have these programs. Our configuration of computers right now, they're all very public and they're not really conducive to a classroom-type setting or any kind of group project. So for instance, if you had several students working on one project, they wouldn't be able to use the computers that we have now. And those are meant for public access throughout the day. This would be for special programs, but it would be for all age groups.
And this is Chromebooks or regular laptops?
Regular laptops.
If the homework is done on Chromebook, why wouldn't we be consistent with that?
Because they have their own Chromebooks from the school. So they can use them. It wouldn't forbid them from using them. It just, this would be in addition to the resources that they already have.
Then how many would it buy, Amy?
15 laptops and the charging cabinet.
And do we have a, do we have a plan for taking these out to where, if they're needed? Do we have a, do we know that there's a demand for classes or...
Well, we could take them out of the building most of the time. I think they would stay in the building for programs here, but we could conceivably take them to, you know, the senior center or the Lake Tahoe branch, something like that. And we don't have a needs assessment other than that patrons are always asking us about classes. You know, they need to learn how to set up email or download eBooks or, you know, any kind of basic computer skills class. But again, it would also allow us to do coding groups for the younger crowd and homework and group projects and dozens of...
Who would we have do that?
Mostly it would be the staff or volunteers.
Well, there are a number of programs that we could also get involved with that teach young people about cybersecurity or programming, satellites. There's a lot of competitions and things and if we could find a coach, we could put a library-sponsored team together. There are a lot of activities out there for, particularly for teenagers to do in groups that require actual computers that have a little more computing power than a Chromebook.
Is there further discussion? Do we have a motion for the submission of the grant?
I move that the director go ahead and apply for this $9,250 for a mobile computer lab from the Smallwood Foundation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Heather, further discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's a 4-0 vote approving the submission of the grant. Item 14, for possible action discussion and possible action on reallocation of funds to the professional services line in order to pay invoice number 90358783 to Oakle Tree, Deacons, Nash, Smoke and Stewart PC in the amount of $12,508.43 for an investigation to the facts surrounding a proposed diversity statement as contracted with the library board in Douglas County. And so I did talk to Terry Willoughby about this and that we have the fund balance, which is the unallocated funds from a carryover that we didn't designate. And the money can be transferred from that fund balance into professional services to pay this amount. So I would make that motion that we transfer the funds from the fund balance to the professional services in the amount of $12,508.43 for payment of the professional services to Oakle Tree, et cetera. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion?
I'm just curious, when the invoice is 25, why we're paying half or if that was already worked out and I just...
It worked out. The county pays half and the library pays half.
Okay, thank you.
Risk management that pays the other half. The grand total of the invoice was $25,016.85. So half of that is the $12,508. And as I said, risk management will be paying for the other half. The adjusted opening fund balance funds come from previous years of money that was unused, such as salary savings or unspent projects, as well as greater than expected tax revenue. So that's what that money is for.
In the fund balance.
Right, that's where it comes from.
She said the money is in the library budget and you could use that. And that way, we don't have to transfer money out of the operational accounts.
Right, but it's not in the budget. I would have to request for it to be put there, but yes.
Okay.
This is, this is an item that I think perception is even more important.
Well, I think it's important that they perceive we're taking it out of operational funds, for sure.
No, it's previous operational funds. But I...
But now it's a fund balance to be used as needed. And it's needed for now, so. Okay, further discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Did everybody voted aye?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes at 4-0. Okay. For discussion only, we're down to number 15, Library Director's monthly report on library operations, statistical reports. Amy?
The monthly report in your packet covers some of the information that's been shared with you in the weekly reports. Curbside service is slowing down a little bit day by day, but we haven't really had a long enough time to evaluate how much it's used on long-term while the library buildings are open. But it's nice to see that the first two days that we were open, we had 301 visits and 1,100 items checked out. Under the staff category, we had a promotion. Rachel Salada was promoted to Senior Library Technician to replace Maria. And now her position is vacant. Her original position was Library Technician. And that's vacant and that'll be posted sometime this week. We're getting ready for summer reading and we hope to have the hotspots and laptops from the CARES Act grant very soon. And that project is moving along now that we've settled the amounts, so. Any questions?
Amy, I appreciate the weekly reports. It really keeps us aware of what's happening.
Good. I agree.
Okay, closing public comments. Veronica, have we had any public comments? Veronica, you're on mute, so.
No, we have not had any closing public comments.
Was Julia going to go over her report, Bonnie?
No.
Julia, the statistical report?
Oh, yes. That one under, so, okay. Okay, Julia.
Just, I have to leave at 1 o'clock because of my teaching schedule.
Okay.
I'll go really quick. On the statistical report, you'll see that in the month of January, the physical checkouts did go down quite a bit, but e-checkouts and database usage did go up a lot. And the database usage, our two highest databases were consistent with what we always see. Heritage Quest, which is our genealogy database, and Novelis, which is our reader advisory database, were the two highest used. You'll also see that the Minden Inventory is down substantially from December. That is due to a couple of weeding projects and just a yearly inventory cleanup that we do at the beginning of the year.
Okay, any questions of Julia? Okay. For public comments, do we wait five minutes, Cynthia?
Yes, once you open it, you have to wait the five minutes.
Okay, we're open for public comments. While we're waiting for public comments, could we schedule the meeting, Amy, with you for like maybe March 17th? And I'd like Kate to be a part of that meeting then? At 10 o'clock?
Let me see. Did you say March 11th or 18th?
17th.
Oh, the 17th, a Wednesday, okay. We usually, well, we had voted at the previous meeting that it would be on the Thursday that's more a week before the board meeting, so that would be...
The 18th?
March 11th.
The reason I asked that is because, is that when the commissioners meet?
On the 18th, yes, that's why, the meeting's supposed to be on the 11th. That's what the board decided, that it would be a week and a half before the board meeting so that we would have time to discuss agenda items and get them on the agenda before it has to be posted, so we couldn't...
So March, March the 11th then?
Yeah.
Is that okay with you, Kate?
Yes.
Okay, so March 11th at 10 in the library.
Okay.
Okay. Amy, when do you think we could start meeting in person?
Whenever you want.
Would the meeting room be available in March?
Probably not, but we can meet whenever. I mean, I'll... I can make it happen if that's what you want.
We might talk about that on the 11th, then, okay?
Okay.
Veronica, have we had any public comment?
No, we have not received any public comment.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, okay, thank you all very much. This has been a very good meeting.